For the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Start the call, the roll call starting on my right.
Counselperson Josh.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Logan.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda. Anything else? Nothing else?
No.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. On my favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will carry the approval of council meeting minutes of the regular meeting of June tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve those minutes. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, on my favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will also carry. That takes the finance and budget. You have a council payable listing there. If we have any questions on that, please get the finance officer, Kelly.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second then.
We have a second. On my favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will also carry. It's going to take a very commotion in general business. First one, under motion in general business tonight is a property, public hearing for a property cleanup at one oh three Third Street Southwest.
Yeah, I know, issues too.
There, this just came up, thanks Josh. Most of the heat. Uh, city has received complaints regarding the condition of the property owned by John and Jamie Hubert, one oh three Third Street Southwest, and pictures are attached. Notice that the public hearing was sent out on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five. I'll close the regular meetings. We open the public hearing. Pursuant to city code sections six hundred, six ten, and seven hundred, the city council will consider the above described nuisance. This public hearing is the opportunity for them to be heard on this matter and to present any evidence or arguments you believe the city council should consider regarding the ordinance violations. Hubert's not here? Did we receive any calls or letters or?
He stopped in one morning and said that he was starting to just clean it up. Um, so I told him that we would go ahead with our, our, um, the motion to declare the nuisance and then we could evaluate after that. So if there was stuff left over, we could still go through it and get it cleaned up. And we'll work with them as, as long as we can. But we did tell him that he wasn't going to get months to do this.
All month and a half.
We didn't tell him any days. We'll, we'll go through that when we work with them.
So the council action, that will be requested tonight based on the finding, finding the facts the city council hereby orders the abatement. And we're giving him the opportunity first, correct?
Try to do a progressive clean.
Before we send our people in to clean up. So it shall be the responsibility of the property owner to pay the cost of setup maintenance if we have to go in and take care of all this, including attorney's fees and administrative costs, which may be assessed to the property and be paid with your taxes. Motion, do we need a motion to, uh?
Yes, based on those finance effects.
Want me to read all the finance effects?
Um, you can just reference that they are like outlined in them or something.
All laid here. There's one, two, three, four. Property owners failed to abate or prevent nuisance. The top photographs are hidden here, dog man, all the waste tires and junk. The failure to abate or prevent the nuisance on the premises of one oh three Third Street is in such quantities as to reasonably annoying, endangering, safety, health, morals, comfort of the public. And failure to abate or prevent the nuisance on this property in such quantities as to make it a non-offensive. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second then.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, on my favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will carry. That will take us on to the next public hearing. On one oh two, Second Street. Southwest. City has, uh, city has received complaints regarding the condition of the property owned by Ryan and Danielle Sackett, one oh two Second Street Southwest. Pictures are attached. Notice that the public hearing was sent out June eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Uh, I closed the regular, oh, forgot to open it.
You opened it, you forgot to close it. So now you can open this one and then.
Then I'll close one.
Closing the dial.
Close the regular meeting and open the public hearing. Pursuant to city code sections six hundred, six ten, seven hundred, the city council will consider the above described nuisance. This public hearing is your opportunity to be heard on this matter and to present any evidence or arguments you believe the city council should consider regarding the ordinance violations. Are those the Sacketts are here?
Yes, sir.
If you want to step up the podium, if you really have to say or add to this.
This is, I guess I didn't know this is a regular way you guys go about letters from lawyer?
Yep.
I didn't know that. I guess I didn't know that. That's just, I didn't know somebody don't come knock on the door and say, hey, you know, can you take care of this stuff? But this is the, the regular format or whatever you guys got. Okay. I don't know. I wish you could shave that taxpayer money home for these letters, right? To the lawyers to write up?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Oh, that's fine. I guess that's the question I had about it. And then I think everything in here is kind of states for itself. The camper deal, I just don't know, the fifteen feet, you gotta be fifteen feet from the curb. I just need some help understanding some of that.
What part don't you understand?
It needs to be on a Stanley's driveway and.
That's in Stanley's driveway, I mean.
From the curb.
Okay.
See, it's, it's a, it's a vision deal is what it is.
Okay, no, yeah, but that was my next question to you.
Yep.
Right, and maybe somebody can't see coming outside of the deal, and then I'll get that to go somewhere. That's fine. The tires, I'll throw that right over to Steve Denny's file, right in the back of his domain. Case, case closed. Right? Yeah, don't matter.
Where you and Steve work out of?
You know, anyway, so yeah, this can all be taken care of in a timely manner. So I guess wherever your time is. My wood file, I work off that lot for different staff, so we'll straighten that out for you. Should be good.
We appreciate it, Rick. We appreciate you and all of Ryan and.
Yep.
Anyone here have anything to add?
No, I think you can, it sounds like you got a good plan.
Yep, as long as you take care of it, we won't have to go any farther.
Yep. No, I get the camper thing and the cock and the wife thing. They probably can't see coming around the corner. I get it.
And that is a city ordinance.
And I get it. I don't want anybody to be hurt. It torn out anyways is crazy when you got a back out, you know, people coming through there without that there. So I do understand that fully. Yep.
All right. Any other writ in the roll?
No.
So you understand?
Yep, that sounds like a good plan.
We've got a good plan to work with.
Okay.
Now, but Ryan, you have to understand, it's like in the previous one, we're going to give you time to do it.
Yeah, it's fine.
We're not going to give you forever.
No, 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 absolutely.
Yep, we won't have to go any farther if you take care of it.
Correct.
All right?
Thank you very much.
Perfect, sorry.
If you go there.
Yep, we're good.
Okay, thank you guys.
All right, I'll close the public hearing. Go back to the regular meetings. Based on the finding of facts, the city council hereby orders. Ever go to the basement of the nuisance and wire the pocket box, if we need to, there will be pending items. Same floor, finding the facts, that we're having previous one. It would also be the responsibility of the property owner to pay the cost of abatement, including attorney's fee. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. On my favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That one also carries. Uh, we have one more public hearing at eight seventeen Burton Boulevard Southeast. You know, it's kind of. It's kind of a sad deal. We just have a free cleanup. They could have hauled everything away at that time. Everybody could have. I guess. Public hearing, uh, city has received complaints regarding the condition of the property owned by Jennifer McLaren, eight seventeen Burton Boulevard, Boulevard Southeast. Pictures are attached. Notice that the public hearing was sent out on the twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. I'm going to close the regular meeting before the public hearing. Same deal, pursuant to city code sample, position, little there, six ten, one zero two E, six ten, one zero four M. The city council will consider the above described nuisance. This public hearing is your opportunity to be heard on this matter. Present any evidence or arguments you believe the city council should consider regarding this ordinance. Any writ in the roll?
None.
We heard nothing back on this one at all?
No. She has been taking care of the weeds, but the fence is still in, falling down, so.
I notice that they cleaned up a, a bunch of boxes that they had, like their whole front area was all piled up and, so I don't know if they're trying to work on it or what else hold their.
The box has been gone with her for three months on it.
No, I know, it's been going forever, but I'm just saying it's up to direct because obviously I, I see it every day. So I'm like.
All right.
That fence is pretty rough.
All right. No other? Andy, you want to say anything about it?
Oh, yeah, well, I have one.
All right, I'll go to the. I'll close the public hearing. Go back to the regular meeting. Based on the following finding of facts, the council hereby orders the abatement of the nuisance and will enter upon the property if pending items, finding of facts. Number one, property owners failed to abate or prevent the nuisance on the premises of eight seventeen Burton Boulevard Southeast. It's in plain view of the body of property owners. We have photographs documenting the fallen down fence, tall weeds, dead branches, show the owners failed to abate or prevent the nuisance. That the failure to abate or prevent the nuisance on the premises is in such quantities as to reasonably annoying, endangering, safety and health. That the failure to abate or prevent the nuisance on the premises of eight seventeen Burton Boulevard Southeast is in such quantities as to be indecent or offensive to the senses. So it would also be the responsibility of the property owner to pay the cost of setup maintenance, including attorney's fees and administrative costs, which will be assessed to the property and be paid with the property tax. Do we have a motion to abate?
I have a motion.
We have a motion.
And you have a question regarding it? As far as when the abatement, if that, where women go in and clean it up? That fence is in such disre, does that mean that they just tear it down or?
We will ask her if she wants us to take it down and dispose of it, or if she wants us to, or somebody to fix it and then assess her.
Okay, so she wants like a choice.
She'll, she'll get a choice.
I'll second. Do we have a second? Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, on my favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that one also carries. That's up, Bill.
Just a general comment. As you know, we've had a longstanding practice of trying to do a phone caller letter to folks, just to give them the benefit of the doubt. But when we've gone to this system, it seems to get the action to happen quicker. And so when they see the city attorney letter, it seems like the response is better. So as you're way out, the property is affected or the neighborhood affected, it seems to be better to go this route, so.
Well, and we still do. Like today I made three phone calls. Um, if I've worked with them before and they don't respond to it, then that's when we just go right to the attorney and never send the letter.
No, I, I, I know, yeah. We've helped with a couple. Okay. That takes us to our next item is Homestead County Sheriff's Department. Homestead County has provided with the twenty-six, twenty-seven law enforcement contracts. The contract amounts for the city contract, eight hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars, six percent increase for twenty-six, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars, four percent for twenty twenty-seven. The cops contract is one hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty, six percent increase for twenty-six, one hundred and thirty-nine, twenty-four, or excuse me, two oh four, four percent increase for twenty-seven. Not included the city costs above the indirect costs, including squad, this is, we don't have to pay, but this is all included. Squad costs, training records, evidence dispatch service, information technology service, administrative supervision, including chief deputy, captains, sergeants, as well as all investigation services. We have any questions? Would we like?
No, I would.
Chief deputy to explain some more?
I looked it over and I, I thought it looked great. I think he has made the right decision not to force me into additional deputy honors because I can truly see, I mean, I see him all the time now, man, it's working. Justin's a rock star, by the way, so he is doing a great job. Yeah, I'm happy with it. And obviously there's going to be increases, so it is what it is.
We're absolutely more than happy with what Justin's been doing down here. He's, he's very visible, he's very involved, he responds as fast as he can to anything we have, as well as the other guys too. I was gonna have to try it on. I think it's, I think it's worked out real well the way the briefcase contract went down to him. I think it's great. I really, I'm happy with Josh.
Yeah, it's nice to have him. Like sometimes I'll see two of the deputies out there making sure everybody's safe, so.
Go back to one of your previous recordings at these meetings and tell me how often you're in the air, talk back, Lloyd. I can tell you're not going to find a lot.
We do have a couple people saying they see twenty-five cops at one time. We can't help, we can't pull those stories. No, it's, uh, things have been run very well. I very much appreciate the way it's been handled and, and, but, and everybody in this room's in agreement. That kid over there is, he's a keeper.
Oh, no.
Do you want to know to thank you for that?
I appreciate it.
I paid him to say that.
Yeah.
If you have any questions, Jim, we're happy to answer. Here we go.
No, just keep up the good work, man.
You're making it too easy.
I like you.
Unless you got something bad.
No, I'm just going to be available for questions and, and counselperson Anderson brought up. What I wanted to is that we don't see a need to add the bodies like it was predicted. I think we're at a good level and we'd like to see that continue, so. We'll just keep our conversation, our lines of conversation open and carry on.
Very much appreciated. So the council actually requested is to approve the twenty-six, twenty-seven law enforcement service agreement between the city of Stewartville, Homestead County, and the community oriented policing officer agreement. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
On second. Any discussion, questions? If not, on my favor say aye. Opposed, that carries. Thank you, thank you, both of you. Doing great. All right, and you can stay if you want, him or you can leave. All right, next one's. It'll be Jenna's deal here. Legacy Drive Northwest improvements. Dash, you'll find the city engineer over on this recommendation to reject all the bids for Legacy Drive Northwest. According to our contracts, bids cannot be held for longer than sixty days. Her recommendation is based on BP Pipeline's denial of the design plans, specifically that the pipe will be too deep for maintenance. About additional conversations with the engineer for BP, it was found that the issue is actually the depth of BP's pipe after completion of the street project prior to the discussion of redesign. Over and over, they'll be redesigning the segment of the roadway to reduce the cover on BP's pipe to eight feet. And then we'll look at storm sewer conveyance options. She has recommended that the project be rebid to allow for construction to start in the fall of twenty-five and to allow for the completion in December of twenty-six. As you're aware, the city received need IBPDI met and completion by December twenty-six is required. Do we have any questions for our engineer?
I do, um, I just don't understand, oh, deep, I mean, it sounds like whatever the design is right now, they had it maybe like ten feet down or something or too deep, and I just don't know that, what the issue would be.
Yep, in the design that we, um, had approved and put out to bid, uh, their pipe would have ended up at ten and a half feet in depth. Um, they rejected it based off of the cost that it would take to go into repairs upon it. Um, they've also stated that this is one of seven projects being done on this pipeline alone, and so they are high, are looking at everything with increased scrutiny, um, and being very picky on what can happen. Um, so had it been that we were the only one, they probably would have gotten through it. But, um, in talking with the engineer, um, which is a consultant, she did state that eight feet in depth will get approved. It could go up to nine and they'll probably still approve it, but they don't like it at ten, ten and a half, say might as well just run a new line. Um, that being said, it's only, it's not even three feet in deep depth right now. Um, and this is at a location where a drainage way comes across, so we need a pipe that, or pipes now, that have enough conveyance for that drainage way. Um, the pipe that was in the original design was a forty-eight inch pipe, and then we need the road to sit on top of that. Um, so that's how we ended up with the depth that they're at. Bringing it down, we will likely have to have more than one pipe crossing the road um, in order to convey all the water, and that will be the change in design.
Well, your decision and not me.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, guys?
It's going to be a pretty easy rebid process, though.
It would be a pretty easy rebid process. Yeah, our, um, water resources engineers said that they would have options by the end of this week to talk through with BP. Um, and then we just, we're going to need their approval, finalize the plans. I'm hoping to be able to come back at the next meeting and ask for approval to go ahead and bid. That would be bids in August. Um, and then we'd be able to start sometime in September.
Does it have to be a?
That would be a perfect one.
No, does it have to be a full completion by twenty-six or can be major completion?
It has to be full completion by the end of twenty-six. So, um, what we would like to see is somebody be able to start on the pipe this fall, um, get pipe in, then we can have a freeze thaw cycle, sediment, then build the road. The road, waiting for the road, it isn't deterring anything at this moment because there's no, it's not going to anywhere. Um, the, as you guys know, United Terrariums is already under construction and they are the only property that is, um, would be using this appropriate, so.
All right, any other questions? Council actually requested is to reject the Legacy Drive Northwest improvement project base. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Reject the bids?
Reject the bids.
Do we have a second?
Second.
On my favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. All right, that takes us out of motion in general business and the mayor's staff consult reports. Mayor's report tonight. City would like to send their sympathies out to the families of Carol Mesken, Judith Knutson, and Scott Strumpf. The Smithsonian display recognizes special Minnesota girls' highest basketball team. Our local legend and sweetheart, Beulah Cane, who's a hundred and six, was highlighted, is the only living one from that era. This display was at the Minnesota History Center recently. Beulah played for the Grand Metal Arts, first girls' team. They played ninety-four games in two years and were undefeated. Oh, I believe her twin sister played, or not her twin, her sister, her younger sister who was passed now, but she was a hundred and four, I think, but she passed, played on the same team. She's quite a lady. Really muscle, still making them pies and everything else, building our own. All right, it's been kind of a wet week so far, but we got Summer Fest coming right up. We're going to get this out of the system. We'll have a great Summer Fest, a lot of activities, all in days, falls on a Friday. Should be pretty wild. Get the whole weekend a party. Let's, uh, not forget to thank the chamber for all the hard work that's been into this again this year and all the other people that come along with it to help, including the sheriff's department and public works department. We got a lot of people involved in this. It takes a lot of people to make this work. Just thank them all. Stewie Cruiser's car shows have started every Friday evening until late fall. Get on out there, check out, they got some good stuff out there. Don't forget the farmer's market and the United Methodist Church out here. It's every Wednesday through September. The signs are always up, they get them up. I think it's from like four thirty to seven or something like that. Check them out. They're getting another one or two vendors every week as, as summer comes and we start getting some vegetables and flowers and stuffs. Take a look at that. I believe that's all I got for the night. Bill, find it, or, yeah, so you ministered your report, huh?
Uh, just two items, um, reports in your packet, and then, um, tomorrow night, we're going to have that open house for the neighborhood. I mean, it's for general public, but mainly the neighborhood, on the Highway thirty update, uh, with design plans and ideas as they keep honing in on that, um, item, and that's over at the Civic Center. And then the second item is, I'm proud to have one of my daughters here, Annie.
You're playing with me?
And, uh, maybe it's the other way around. She flips the coin once in a while. But proud that she is sort of in the public service as she's a nurse in a big hospital out in Greeley, Colorado, so she helps people like all of you do, so. What I have here, Annie.
Um, I guess I forgot to mention, keep your eyes out. We're gonna let them know if the concert's on or off.
It's, we're canceling.
You are? All right.
They're gonna, they're gonna play the third week in August.
Okay, all right.
If we cancel now, we're gonna have a PM.
Okay.
Cancel tomorrow, we PM.
All right. All right. We're having a rough run, huh?
I know. Last like three, right?
Yep. Oh, gosh, all right. I'm so sad, I can't continue. Finance officers report. Kelly, what do you got, please?
No report.
What?
I love you.
All right, any questions for Kelly? All right, public works director Sean?
There is a report in there, and I want to point out yesterday, we had a water main break down by our shop, and I want to thank, nice of, his bosses here too. Justin, more than willing to help us out, but it'll be on Main Street. We had to shut it off on the Main Street during rush hour, and he was up there helping us. I was happy to do so, and then also, we couldn't get our fire truck, old fire truck going to pump some, we had some bells that were full set, and I called Ryan Pouding down at Pouding's and asked if they could bring a fire truck up, and he snapped us and came down and helped us out, and just huge when we're sitting there in the middle of traffic and, and they're willing to come help like that. So I want to thank those guys for getting so long to help out, and hopefully we return those favors when you guys need help, so. Makes us want to.
I'll write that out. Thanks for getting the new flagpole. Thanks for getting that memorial bench in for my brother. You guys are doing a real knock-up job keeping this long, by the way, it is. I mean, that's something there. And if you didn't, if nobody got a chance to get out to that night, that big rig rodeo out there was like a state fair, but you're, people crawling out there. Sean took care of that for his last, that was during last week.
It's so popular. A lot of kids want to find out on the equipment and.
All right, any questions for Sean? If not, city engineer Dana, you got anything else?
Um, just an update for eleventh. Um, you guys might have been aware that in our contract we did state that the road needed to be open fourth, fourth of July. There was a chance there might be curbing better, but it will not be paved. Um, likely will not be open for traffic, but for parking at the park, nothing will be different than previous years.
Traffic will be able to get done, just will not be blocked up.
Are we still hanging back up on the black tub yet?
Well, the rain has not helped.
No, I know, but are they hit, caught on that ninety-five or are they getting some?
I believe they have been. We have not been given any dates as to when they will be able to come to town. I will let you know as soon as I do.
All right, sounds good. Any other questions for Jenna? All right, thank you, Jenna. Well, we got Nate here with his monthly report. What's going on at the library?
Oh, we're so busy. Uh, all that rain, just, they just flood on into my library.
They do what?
When it, when it rains, that's when everyone shows up, so.
I didn't make it, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
We do have a Taylor Swift there, or what's this about?
We have a Taylor Swift kit.
Oh.
It includes, um, a friendship bracelet with, um, you know, uh, various Taylor Swift phrases depending on, um, and, uh, yeah, the one I did had blank space, which I think is inherently funny. Um, and, yeah, uh, sticker art's really been popular too. Um, I, I feel like it's my duty to make sure that, that children of Stewartville learn various weird skills before they finish high school. And so if they can all learn one magic trick, a little bit of sign language, and how to use invisible ink, I have done my job.
You can hang up down with people and weird stuff.
You gotta be a little nervous with the adult book club, but not even.
Yeah, that's fair enough, fair enough. Gotta do something for grownups every once in a while.
Anything else you need to let us know or why don't us know?
I think we're doing okay. Um, you know, like. I think we're doing okay. Um, you know, like, uh, yeah. Everything else that's in my report is, I, I went for a, a Bill and Sean style report. I hope you don't mind this month.
Yeah, you're having fun with the software, it looks like.
Oh, my God. You know, it's just, it's just, it's great. It's innovative. It's gonna be wonderful. And right now, I hate it a little bit.
Alright, any other questions for Nate? Alright, thank you Nate.
Thank you.
We're a choir chief, but we got a pool director and Nate. Jake, what do you got for us?
We survived the weekend, so it's good. It's like another good weekend. Um, slow start, but it's been picking up with the rain. Obviously it's been a slow down, but it's been good. Sean and his crew, can't thank them enough. Dalton takes the lead with public works and doing some long nights, getting that thing ready before, uh, we were able to open, but we got it going and the first month, knock on wood, is, everything's been going really well.
Have you started one lessons already too?
Yeah, so session one ends this Friday.
Really?
So we'll be, and it is full.
And I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but we are going to have to resurface that at the end of the season. So we're gonna be working on getting pricing and resurfacing.
They have a pool?
We are losing water in the pool. Uh, it can keep up to it, but there are some cracks and some stuff in the servicing, which it's been twenty years.
Twenty years next year.
Yeah, so it's, that's a maintenance issue and so we'll be getting pricing on trying to get that done this fall because I rather not wait till spring. All of a sudden, we're in a rush doing it. I'd rather get it done in the fall.
We should add a weight machine to that basically. So you take your own weight.
Just write the check.
Do you think our numbers are gonna be affected by the whole soldier spiel thing being up and going?
It looks very similar to last year. I think we've had like about six thousand so far. We've only been open for two weeks because they got us school late, but we hit ten by the end of the month and that, that's pretty consistent. Seems to be on the path of passes and everything. Tiger Time started today, so, or yesterday, but.
Any other questions for Jake? Thanks Jake. That takes us to committee commission and board reports, chamber of commerce, off the deep packet. Nobody here, Al, you got nothing to add? EDA, HRA, that city improvement. Deal we're doing, that's
Yeah, the residential ones.
That's going crazy. Yep, we got a six month, I think she said. So that's going good. Finance, Kelly, you got anything coming up?
We'll be starting to work on the budget soon, so next week or so.
Thank you. Library? Art board? Personnel?
I'm battling the union group today to get, see their proposal for negotiating, so that'll move forward at some point.
Alright, good. Spine zoning?
Nothing.
Public safety?
Uh, I don't have anything pressing calls wise. Like you said, we had the big rig, big rig with bike rodeo fair.
Eleven?
Uh, that was good. There was good turnout. Everybody, it's, we're having fun. I had to leave a little early duty call. Luckily Sean was there to pick up my slack. And then, yeah, I guess just with Summer Fest, Sean was trying to help me keep my sanity, you know, figuring out the program and stopping people from drive through and I think that
Good luck with that.
Right now, we're there, uh, until the day after and I'll tell you that. I didn't say anything.
I told one thirty years later, he'll be used to it. It doesn't seem whatever. I hope I'm not used to it for thirty years.
Oh, gee, thanks. We'll take everything back we said about here.
No, it's a problem. We do too good of a job, so nobody wants to leave.
It should go fine. Well, then I guess we're slacking a little bit, I guess. But no, everything should be good. Uh, we got our overtime and stuff all sent out. I think that it's filled up or it's real close to being, so we're locked and loaded right for Summer Fest.
Sure.
Uh, like we lost the speed trailer, went up to another place. Uh, once again, if you guys hear people complaining of speed, we'll correct it or tell them that they're wrong and we'll put it out, so.
Alright, thanks, thanks Justin. Public works, nothing ready?
Uh, no report. We had a meeting yesterday. We meant it to be forthcoming. Uh, main discussion was on a potential RDO, which is a regional development organization. But that's many discussions ahead too, so.
Little cock?
Uh, no report.
Trans advisory committee?
No report at this time.
Communications, now the communication there is today's six twenty-four, twenty-five, or six months from Christmas. Started putting me on your list, Justin. Open mic, anybody want to do open mic tonight? If not, that leaves one motion.
A little too jern?
Annie, do you want to do open mic?
Karaoke?
Oh, good. If you got a motion, do a jern. We got a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Alright.
Opposed. Do a jern. Thank you.